Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the city of Moreno Valley. Today is June 4th, it's about 5:35, and our first presentation will be a business spotlight, O'Reilly Auto Parts. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the certificate to the business.
Good evening. Tonight, we are recognizing a business in District 2, and located at 12240 Paris Boulevard, O'Reilly Auto Parts has been in business since 1957 with thousands of stores located across the nation. O'Reilly Auto Parts is an American auto parts retailer that provides aftermarket parts, tools, supplies, equipment, and accessories. Serving both the professional service providers and DIY customers, O'Reilly's a mobile favorite for superior customer service with a smile. O'Reilly Auto Parts' mission is to be the leading supplier of auto parts by offering customers the best combination of price and quality provided with the highest level of customer service. At O'Reilly, customers can ensure they are getting the best quality at affordable prices. Today, we recognize O'Reilly with this business spotlight video.
Your Moreno Valley O'Reilly Auto Parts store is here to serve you. We carry every part, tool, and accessory you need, as well as offering free services like battery testing, wiper blade and bulb installation, check engine light testing, and more. At O'Reilly Auto Parts, we are committed to help you get the job done right and save you money in the process. O'Reilly Auto Parts, better parts, better prices, every day.
Okay, and fun fact, we also have an O'Reilly Distribution Center in our city as well. So I would like to call up here tonight the district manager, Will Edwards. If you could please join me if we can give him a round of applause. And it's our pleasure on behalf of the city council to recognize you with this certificate on behalf of the city and staff, that is for you. And we also have here the file for the video so you can upload it and do all the marketing and advertising and get more customers through your door, so that is for you as well. And would you like to share a few words?
Sure. So I'm not a very big speech person, but this is a, I mean, it's a tremendous video that the city put on, and I was very, very baffled. I think it's better than some of the videos we produce ourselves. But I'd just like to thank the city council, it's awesome program. I wasn't too aware of the program. I don't live in Moreno Valley, but I spend the majority of my life in Moreno Valley. And I wasn't aware of the program until this came out, and I thought it's an amazing program, what you guys do, especially for a lot of the local businesses, and just get some more business revenue into the city is absolutely amazing, and that's a huge honor. Thank you very much. Thank you to the council, and that's all, yeah, thank you once again.
Thank you so much. Do we take a picture?
Thank you, O'Reilly Auto Parts. Well, thank you, O'Reilly Auto Parts. Our second presentation is an additional business spotlight for Zapatas Mexican Restaurant. Zapatas is a family-owned and operated business that has been serving up delicious dishes for over 20 years. Located at 13373 Paris Boulevard, patrons can expect to walk into a colorful and welcoming environment with amazing dishes and innovative beverages. All of the food is made in-house, including their delicious homemade corn tortillas. Owner Lisa Sarmiento says that the best part of doing business in Moreno Valley is the people and the community. Zapatas loves being able to watch their customers' family grow generation after generation and start their own families. They keep coming back for the famous tortilla soup, menudo, fajitas, mole poblano, and tamales. Zapatas also has a full bar, serving up picture-worthy michiladas, margaritas, and piña coladas. Find your favorite Mexican classics and drink and share them with family and friends at Zapatas. Today, we recognize Zapatas with this business spotlight video. Please roll the video.
Come down to Zapatas Authentic Mexican Restaurant, where we've been serving fantastic Mexican food for over 20 years. With our menu of delicious dishes, we have something for everyone. And don't forget to try our famous tortilla soup. We've also got a bevy of beverages, from cervezas to piña coladas. With food this good, you'll think it's your abuela's cookie. Zapatas Authentic Mexican Restaurant, a true taste of Mexico.
Lisa, if you can join me at the mic? So here's your certificate on behalf of the city council in the city of Moreno Valley, and it reads Zapatas Mexican Restaurant is recognized to build awareness and support of Moreno Valley businesses. Congratulations and best wishes for continued success and growth in Moreno Valley.
Thank you, everybody. Our family is very fortunate and grateful to still be serving our community after 20 years. We look forward to seeing everybody at Zapatas, and thank you, Victoria Baca, councilwoman, and all the council people for this nice award. Thank you.
And I want to say that I eat there often. Try their chilaquiles for breakfast, and I'm sure you'll have enough to take home. And here's the USB that you can use on your social media for this clip. Thank you to the two businesses, and welcome to Moreno Valley. I know you've been here a long time, but it's good that you're here. This is the best city to do business. Let's give them another round of applause. And that concludes our special presentations for today, and the regular city council meeting will reconvene at 6 o'clock. Valley. And it reads Zapatas Mexican Restaurant is recognized to build awareness and support of Moreno Valley businesses. Congratulations and best wishes for continued success and growth in Moreno Valley.
Thank you, everybody. Our family is very fortunate and grateful to still be serving our community after 20 years. We look forward to seeing everybody at Zapatas, and thank you, Victoria Baca, councilwoman, and all the council people for this nice award. Thank you.
And I want to say that I eat there often. Try their chilaquiles for breakfast, and I'm sure you'll have enough to take home. And here's the USB that you can use on your social media for this clip. Thank you to the two businesses, and welcome to Moreno Valley. I know you've been here a long time, but it's good that you're here. This is the best city to do business. Let's give them another round of applause. And that concludes our special presentations for today, and the regular city council meeting will reconvene at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the joint meeting of the city council of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, city a successor agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, Moreno Valley Public Financing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The city council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this regular city council meeting to order on June 4th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Melvin Thomas from Praise and Worship Center.
Shall we honor the emblem of our great country in respect to its colors by reciting the following saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Thank you again for this opportunity. I'm gonna come forth with the invocation, I'm gonna give a short scripture and a prayer. The scripture I have is Galatians, Chapter 6, Verse 9, and it says, "And let us not be weary and well-doing, for in due season we shall reap if we faint not." So this was just an encouragement for you, Mr. Mayor, to just keep doing what you're doing, you're doing a great job. So with heads bowed and eyes closed, dear Lord, we thank you today for being great in our lives.
calendar forward first, as the first item. I do want to let the public know that City Manager DeSantis has requested that item number A sixteen be removed from the agenda and not considered. That's the Sendejas Consultant Agreement. All items listed under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D, and E are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion. For the Community Redevelopment Agency, Community Services District, Housing Authority, or the Board of Library Trustees, and then the motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the City Clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. So at this point, if there's any items that you would like for discussion or for pool, to, or to pool. Councilmember Marquez?
Yes, A nine, separate vote. A twenty-two for discussion and separate vote. Rest will be at later day. Gs, you wanna pull G now? Not now. Those two.
Okay, so A nine and A twenty-two?
Yes.
Okay, well goes... Hey, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items for comment. It's A four, A six, A ten, and A fifteen. A ten and fifteen.
And A fifteen. Okay, we'll do the comments ones first. All right, Councilmember Cabrera, if you just wanna make some brief comments on each of those?
Thank you. Yeah, so I think it's important to really take a look at this and spend a few seconds on these items. A four has to do with the gunshot detection technology that we are purchasing using asset forfeiture funds. We're, we're one of the first, I believe, in the state to actually start utili- utilizing this technology, which, which I think will really help our police department for addressing public safety issues. So just wanted to make sure that, that that is identified. The next item is A six, and that's the MOU between Moreno Valley College and the city. We have with us Dr. Melody Gravine from the college. Thank you for coming out. And, and I pulled it, I pulled this one because this is very important, too, that, that we're investing into the education of our youth, that we are making sure that we're preparing the, the residents of Moreno Valley for the jobs that are coming in the future. And I think it's very important. I hope that a lot of people find out about this and other cities can follow suit as well. So I just wanted to make sure that we give a shout out to Moreno Valley College, too. For A ten, that is also use of asset forfeiture funds for a UA, an unmanned aircraft system. Specifically, it's, it's gonna be used for reconstructing traffic collisions. So I think that'll be very useful. And also, it was below the price I thought I was expecting, so that's always a good thing. And I hope that this will open the door in the future to start using more technology like this for other things like hot pursuits or search and rescues and things of that nature. So just wanted to identify that. And the last one is A fifteen. That's, that's CDBG funding for more roads, which I think we can all agree that it's a good thing. We're really grateful that we're getting the funding from the federal government so that we can keep maintaining and repairing city roads. So just wanted to make sure that we pointed those out so that everybody knows everything that's on the agenda here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Cabrera, and I definitely agree with those comments. I'm really excited about a lot of these initiatives, and I know that the council is as well. So, so great. So thank you for, for sharing those. We will go with public comments on consent items other than A nine and A twenty-two?
Mayor, can I add one more, just for quick questions?
Okay.
On A eleven, A twelve, and A thirteen?
Okay, so A eleven, twelve, and thirteen?
Just one question.
All right, go ahead.
I believe I can address this to our city manager. On these four-year contracts, just let the public know why we do the four years and that we're not stuck with the four years in case something else comes up.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor, pro tem members of the council. Councilmember Marquez is correct. Although these are four-year contracts, the city would not be bound to these contracts if the providers fail to perform. These contracts have been placed before you through the piggyback process where the County of Riverside bid them competitively, and we were able to access, access the discounted price that Riverside County negotiated for these contracts.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you. And then, any public comments on consent items, Madam Clerk, other than A nine and A twenty-two?
Yes, we have Bob Palomares. David Zeitz, Roy Blackard.
Good evening, Council.
Okay, we'll do, uh, go ahead, um, go ahead, Bob.
I would just wanted to comment on us supporting the police department as well when we support the fire department, that whenever they need your help, you've always been there. And I support anytime they ask for something. I know sometimes it's, you know, it's all money, but I'm in support of what you've got on the agenda for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, Mr. Zeitz?
I'm sorry, Mayor, they're, they are for non-agenda items.
Okay, so I need the...
Just, Bob is for agenda items.
Okay, all right. Is it Roy Blackard still? A sixteen was pulled. Yeah. Yes, it was removed. Yeah, it was removed. Okay. Okay, so public comment on non-agenda items is not up yet. She's, it was just confusing. Okay, sorry about that. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding items A nine and A twenty-two?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, just a reminder, there are a couple of items that require recusal that will be reflected in the vote.
Yes, A fifteen, I'm going to recuse myself from A fifteen. I believe Councilmember Thornton.
Yes, I'm gonna recuse myself from A fifteen.
From A fifteen.
And both of those are as a result of property ownership within the area. Also not, item B three?
And B three is Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
And for the same reason. That's not correct. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion by council to approve, accept, item A nine and A twenty-two with the changes of having a recusal from Mayor Gutierrez and Councilmember Thornton on A fifteen, and then a recusal from Councilmember Marquez on B three. Okay, moved by Councilmember Marquez, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote.
I would prefer that the motion is made by somebody that is not recusing on any of the items.
All right.
I move to approve.
Okay, motion made by Mayor Pro Tembaca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Someone hasn't voted.
They're abstaining from there.
No, she's gonna mark it as recusal for you.
Recusal, okay, so I'd go... Okay.
Or item B three is a recusal for you. Okay, so that moves us to... Okay, so we'll go straight to... Actually, if there's consensus, council, I'll just go straight to H, and we'll go to... A twenty-two, we'll do a staff report. Okay, so City Attorney. And then the other one is the A nine one.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councilmembers. Deciding before you is for your consideration to introduce and conduct a first reading of an ordinance that, when adopted, would authorize a stipend of six hundred dollars for the elected mayor position. The state law provides for additional compensation for directly elected mayor, Government Code, Section three six five one six point one. The item is here before you for your consideration, and with that, I'll submit.
All right, any council questions? No council questions? Please press your... Okay, Councilmember Marquez? And we're, it's only questions, so not deliberation part. No questions?
This question, well, yeah, I wanted to deliberate on it.
Will it deliberate? Will, we do that after public comments?
Comments, yeah, that's what I wanna do.
Okay, okay. Any public comments?
Yes, we have nine. Scott Heverin, Frank Wright, David Zeitz are the first three.
Okay, we'll do two minutes each.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Moreno Valley. So it's legal, but is it ethical? That's, that's what you should be asking yourself. Putting this in June with basically one day's notice in the press enterprise, you know? Okay, who else but elected officials get to vote for their own raise? This is not the first bite at this. Last year, it was reported in the press enterprise that you wanted a much larger raise, but it wasn't you that wanted it. It was staff that wanted it. And I, apparently, is it staff that wants it this time? There's, if you want more money, there's, there's a couple of ethical ways you could go about it. You could, in, in all that campaign literature, you could have mentioned that you wanted a raise, that possibly that you were doing more than the job, uh... The job was too much for you, that you needed extra money for it to compensate for the extra work that you were putting in. Never saw anything about that in your campaign literature. And then, the, another way would have been, would be to have a charter where we could have a mayor that gets paid at a certain rate, and you don't get to come in here and vote for pay raises. Who does that? If you had a ethical... The, the problem with this is, the ethics are the same as when, when Co is here. They haven't changed. They haven't gotten stronger. You've got a group of people, a group of Highland Fairview supporters that are gonna come up here and they're gonna say the mayor deserves the raise. And that's fine. You may, you may well deserve the raise, but this isn't the way to do it. This is unethical. You need to put it on a study session. You need to have a discussion about it.
Thank you, Mr. Heverin. Next speaker, please.
Frank Wright, David Zeitz, Miguel Soto Mayor.
Honorable Mayor, councilmen and staff.
Good evening, Frank.
Good evening, sir. This is, the city's had a lot of mayors, but now we have a present mayor who is well sacrificial but dedicated to the benefit of the people of this city. And the fact that he is recommended by our staff indicates that he is a capable and dedicated man to support them, that they work together and organize a good infrastructure and develop a fine city that we do have. Anybody that can't understand this, I should just walk out the door. But nevertheless, Mayor, you have, you have the education, the dedication, the honor, and the principles implied to develop the city, and you've been able to overcome obstacles just as a staff does. The staffs are hard worker. You recognize them. All of you worked together, make this the best city in California, and I recommend that this benefit be passed. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
David Zeitz, Miguel Soto Mayor, Julio Flores.
Good evening, Council and Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm against a budget adjustment of seventy-two hundred dollars as shown in the financial import, impact section of the report. Gutierrez already gets thirteen thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars, and increase would raise it to twenty thousand, four hundred and twelve. The wording says six hundred more dollars per month in extra compensation entire, that he would represent the entire city. I feel is a lie. The mayor itself, at admissions, only represents those who share his vision, in which he means he does not represent anyone who opposes the WLC, and among other things. His main job as a ceremonial mayor is to appoint residents to boards and commissions and tasks that he has falsely miser- miserably at, failed miserably at. Plenty of qualified applications, but most commissions aren't full. As you can see, the planning commission, he appoints friends and least qualified and most disruptive, disruptives. And case point, myself, contractor, plan checker, has applied for the planning commission months and months ago, have yet to hear anything, whether it was accepted, granted a interview, any of that nation. Basically, the rest of it is beneath me to say, and I won't go into it because I don't believe in character assassination. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zeitz. Next speaker is Michael Soto Mayor? Soto Mayor? Soto Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Michael.
Council. My name is Mike Soto Mayor, and I am a resident of Moreno Valley and have been going on four years in June. During my time here in residence, here in Moreno Valley, I have seen the impressive direction provided by our mayor and staff. And this has led to many improvements for the city and us residents. As a union carpenter, I know the importance of being paid, being paid adequately for one's hard work, and I strongly believe that the same applies here today. With that being said, I urge you to please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Julio Flores, followed by Omar Kobian?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Julio Flores. I am a resident of Moreno Valley and a union carpenter by profession. In my opinion, due to the great leadership provided by the mayor, it is easy to see the benefit and need to increase a compensation received for the hard work given. Please vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Next speaker is Omar Kobian?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen. I wanna start by saying my name is Omar Kobian. I've been a resident of Moreno Valley for twenty-eight years now. Actually, this Wednesday will be my daughter's graduation in high school, same high school I went to, Valley View High School. And I'm really proud to say I live in Moreno Valley, you know, and however, that wasn't always the case, you know? And, and I honestly think Moreno Valley is a city of over two hundred thousand people. It needs stable and strong leadership. And I feel that Dr. Gutierrez, with the help of our city council members, is that leader. As a union carpenter, I've seen more jobs come to Moreno Valley than I've ever seen in my twenty years' career. Programs like the Summer City Hall, where the youth get to actually be a voice, was brought together. That's what's bringing pride back into Moreno Valley. I'm telling you guys, six, seven years ago, not a lot of people were proud to say they lived in Moreno Valley. I am proud here to tell you, I am proud to live in Moreno Valley. And a lot of it has to do with this council and the mayor, Dr. Gutierrez. To close my statement, I would like to, for the council members to vote yes on the future of Moreno Valley and the reputation, and yes on Dr. Gutierrez's compensation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Senator Murphy, Roy Blackard, followed by Bob Palomares.
Good evening. I'm resident of Moreno Valley and representing myself. I've been in Moreno Valley for twenty-six, I think twenty-six years. You know, every employee who get paid is a part-time or full-time. Compensation is very important. Nobody does work for free. Why persons who are giving the opinion of what it was the city in nineteen nineties saying that what he's doing right now, Dr. Gutierrez, is not enough for the race? Okay, well, let me... Okay, well, let me give you some, uh, statistics. In the nineteen nineties, where we were living here a hundred and some people, now we over two hundred thousand people. So that right away give you an idea and common sense. At these times, with the cost of living, everybody needs a raise. And not only that, we should be very proud that we have someone who wants to go everywhere he, he needs to go. And at this time, a lot of people is opinion that they should not pay him more. That is, that is not right, and it's not a common sense. And you who needs to vote for that, remember, don't shut your foot before you run. You might, one day might be in that seat, and you will deserve a raise too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Roy Blackard, followed by Bob Palomaros.
As one of the lead proponents on the Measure R, when that came up, I specifically put it out there in the debates, it only took three votes of the council to raise the mayor's salary. Now, you can look at it this way, and there's a lot of arguments to make it to that. But I will ask each and every one of you, if you have increased responsibilities and duties in your work, are you expecting extra compensation at your job? If your boss says, "Well, we're gonna load this stuff up on you and add you XXXX", you say, "Well, I need a raise." Well, look at the four of you. You represent twenty-five percent of the city. The mayor represents a hundred percent of the city. He has to deal with all the residents he represents and was elected by all of them. So he has more responsibility than the other four. So if you look at this in the private sector, and as most of you will look at this personally, when you have added responsibilities, you expect more pay, more compensation, more benefits. It's the way it works. It's called incentives. And that's the way I would look at this. Now, even when that, and I would agree with Scott, I mean, if we would put a proper charter together, and I've advocated that council members and the mayor should be full-time positions in a city of two hundred thousand. But that's a debate we can have later on. But it probably should happen if we would get our act together and do that as it was started about six years ago on that. I think that should, that should be a discussion and part of the responsibilities and, and outlook that the council should have as we're moving forward. So we can move Moreno Valley from the redheaded stepchild it has been for many decades up into the leader it should be. So when you're taking and looking at this, consider all the factors when you make your vote.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Roy. Okay, next speaker is Bob Palomaros.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman and Staff. Mayor, you and the council have always made the city's well-being priority one. That's obvious. I'm basing, uh, my approval of this based on what has been accomplished. You know, there's, I don't think there's any past-appointed mayor, you're the first elected, that has accomplished so much. I know Roy was saying that you do more than I, than the other council members. That's probably true to a certain point, because at times, you all have to vote on one item or more. So you're all entangled in it, and, uh... You know, you and staff have put the city on the path of progress, you know, and look at what we've accomplished. You know, there's people that oppose it. I was reading in the paper, some former council members. But they're not here, they're out there. They had their shot at it. They couldn't do nothing. They didn't... You're the one that has done it with the council members that are with you, Mayor Pro Tem. So my belief is that, you know, when they had their opportunity to do things, they didn't do them. They cost us a lot of money, because a lot of them were involved in the corruption. You know, and they talked about ethics. They cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars. And falsely accusing people, and they talk about ethics. They don't know what ethics are. It's just a word they throw around. So I approve of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, next speaker is Luis Palomaros.
Wow, the crybabies are here again. Scott and that Dave guy. Maybe I got it wrong, but they oppose everything this council does, everything. If their people were on this council, the ones they wanted, like the LaDona people and all those, George Price, and, oh yeah, they would have been for it all. You know, the destructionists of the city. You know, we need to pay the mayor or give him a stipend, because he does a lot of work in the city. In the little time he's been there, I don't know, four, five years? He's done a lot. He's put us on the map, over and over again. We got the budget, what, three times, three years in a row, going good? We got all these programs for the youth. We got that skate park going on. Come on! This is this council. This council that's doing that, our mayor that's doing that, he deserves that and more. And compared to other cities, he gets a drop in the bucket. Give me a break! You know, he works hard. He does his work, he does it all. He ma, he crosses all his Ts and dots all his Is. But you know, you got the crybabies here again. They always cry about whatever and everything. You never could please those people. I said, "If God said this, they would say no." That's how bad they are. You know, anything for kids here, they're against. They're against. That's who these people are, the liars club here. You know, anything this council tries to do to get us into the twenty-first century, they don't like. They don't like. You know, Gaiva, Marcus, the same, they're, they're not for the kids. You know, they're not for our kids, they're not for the community. They're for themselves. They're here to be served, not to serve. Our mayor's here to serve. And he's been serving and bending over backwards to make it happen, along with the rest of the council right here. I mean, you know, you're amazing, all of yous, except for this guy, you know? And our, and our staff is totally amazing, totally amazing. These are his naysayer, uh, people that are here today. They're against everything that happens in this city. Go for it and do what you gotta do. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. All right, we're gonna go to council deliberation. Okay, would any council members like to speak? Okay, we have Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you, Mayor. And, uh, just wanna make one comment, but, you know, the mayor position now is a directly elected mayor. That's something that's completely different for the thirty-odd years that the city has been in existence. And like Roy said, um, he's in charge of representing the entire city, the two hundred and ten thousand people here in Moreno Valley. So, so whether it's Dr. Gutierrez or any mayor who comes after him, I think this, in my opinion, small increase in compensation that stipend is justified by that fact. So that's, that's all I'd like to say.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. When we ran for this office, all of us up here, not one of us mentioned in our literature about getting paid. What we mentioned was, "Oh, we wanna help the city grow. I love this city." Never men, mentioned one time, I didn't do it, about money. Money never was said. I've lived here for forty, almost forty-eight years. And I can tell you one thing. If I'm up here because of the money, then you know what? I should have never retired and continued working. The city spends a lot of money on a lot of projects. Seventy-two hundred dollars is a lot of money for some people out there. You want my opinion? We're all overpaid up here. We didn't, I didn't get this job because of the money. I, I got this job because I wanted to help the community, and I have done that. But we're all overpaid. When I first got elected, I was gonna donate some of my salary, but I was told by staff that I could not do that, it's against the law. I give a lot to nonprofit groups. So it's not about money. Somebody wants to make more money, they can get a second job and work for it. Yeah, the, the mayor is in charge of the whole city. So is, are we, my colleagues. We represent the city. If somebody called me from District One, you think I'm gonna say, "I can't help you." Go, go talk to, uh, your member, council member. No, we go out there and we help them. We represent the whole city. But are we asking for a raise? Is the council asking for a raise? No. We shouldn't be asking for a raise. Not the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, or any council member. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councilmember Dr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse my voice, I'm not feeling, um, well today. Um, I wanted to say, you know, I am conservative when it comes to fiscal spending. And when I originally saw it on the agenda, you know, part of me was very resistant to it because of that. I, you believe it's my responsibility to be a voice concerning, um, being, um, being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, right? It's very important. Um, whether it's bureaucrats or politicians, that not only are we being transparent about the dollars that we're spending, but that it's being spent in a way that is beneficial for our community. Um, however, um, you know, our mayor, we are the second largest city in Riverside County, over two hundred thousand residents. If you did a cost comparison of the, the size of our city compared to other mayors, they're getting paid more, right? And so if you saw what was going, I've, I've been on the dais now for what, seven months? If you would see what's going on behind the scenes, the work that Mayor Gutierrez is doing, the amount of meetings he's having with staff, every time there's an event, he's having multiple meetings with staff, um, human resource issues. He spends more time in City Hall than I would say, um, the rest of the city council members. We're all doing really hard work. However, um, you know, you need to get paid, um, to, for the work that you're doing. Um, and I think it's very important for us and our continued growth to stop, to move away from the small-town mentality, right? There's a lot of demands that our residents have upon us and place upon us. And in order to give us, um, the, the resources, this is what it's about, it's about resources. In order to give us the resource to do the work, that needs to be done to get our city to the place that you want it to be at. Um, we need to have, um, some additional money, and the mayor needs that. And so we keep saying, "Oh, it's six hundred dollars." But we all live in the state of California, how much is that after taxes? Right? What, nine percent goes to the feds, another eight percent goes to the state? So really, really, let's talk about, and that thirteen thousand that he's making, that's really not thirteen thousand after taxes too. So right, so if we just think about the six hundred dollars, that's really what, four hundred and ninety-two dollars extra? Um, and so, um, I, I, I think it's very important for us to support him in that endeavor. And I did a little bit of research. Um, there's an article, a research report that was done about paying politicians theory and evidence. And if anyone wants to, me to share this report with you, please email me, carlotte@movial.org, and I'll share it with you. And when I first decided to run for office, what I noticed was there was a bunch of older white men. And I wondered, why were there not younger people in office? Why were that not more people that looked like me, that were my age, single-parent moms? And it's because they could not afford to take time off work to do the work that's required to sit on the dais. That's why they weren't running for office. And the previous mayors, if you look at what their occupations were, one was a auto ship, auto dealership owner. And the previous one was a retired lieutenant colonel from the Air Force and a lawyer. So they were living off of their pensions. They were already making money. And if you want people that look like me to be able to sit on this dais, not only at the local level, but the state level and the federal level, they have to be compensated so they can do the work and take care of their families and their households. All right? And so on this article, on page ten, and like I said, I'll share it with you, it, the, it, the theory was here that you need to pay politicians, because, um, they saw that there was an increase in the amount of diversity, that the standard white male lawyer is setting quotation marks. That the more you pay them, you saw more diverse representation. Right? Um, and you see that appear on the dais here. You see that on the dais here. Um, I did not get in this gig for the money. I didn't. But please believe, it cost me. It cost me to be up here. Um, and I would say the rest of my colleagues here didn't get here, didn't come up here for the money too. Um, but I, I, I am supportive of this. I believe that this will help, help provide the mayor with additional resources to do the work that needs to be done to move our city, continue to move our city forward. And, um, and I appreciate you giving me this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Baca?
Well, thank you, Dr. Thornton. She said a lot of the things that I wanted to mention, but I'll just say that, um, personally, uh, I've met with staff regarding this, um, stipend for the mayor, and I've also read the staff report. And when the press called and asked, you know, "How do you feel about it?", I was very honest about it. Because I do support the mayor, and I do support that he, uh, receives that stipend. Because I can tell you firsthand that I see what he does here at City Hall and out in the community. And, um, I'm an eyewitness. It's not hearsay, like a lot of you out there are saying that, you know, he doesn't do anything and that he doesn't deserve it. You don't know anything. I mean, the speakers that came up here and were against it, uh-uh, you don't know. You don't know. I don't see you at any of the events. I don't see you here at City Hall, only when you wanna come and gripe. But other than that, you're not here. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, close the deliberation, and I'll entertain a motion by council.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Cabrera, second by Mayor Pro Tem Baca. Please vote. Okay, and it's approved. Motion carries for yes, one no. We'll go to item A, A nine. Your attorney?
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Again, this ordinance is before you, um, to amend the municipal code to provide for an increase in compensation to this council, to the council members. Uh, council salaries, uh, based on the, uh, HR records, in the nineteen nineties were six hundred and sixty dollars a month. They were increased in oh-four, they were increased in oh-five, again, increased in oh-seven. As we know, in oh-eight, the depression, um, hit, and, um, for a period of last twelve years, the council has not, uh, received any, uh, increases, has not provided themselves with any, um, increases. The, uh, state law provides for a five percent per year adjustment, uh, that can be contemplated by the council, and that is the amount, uh, that is here before you. If adopted, the ordinance will move the, um, council member's salary to seventeen hundred and sixty-two dollars per month. With that, I'm open, uh, to any questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, any council questions of staff? Any public comments?
None.
Okay, uh, any deliberation on this item? Yes, okay, Councilor Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we get back to the salaries again, for us. This goes in effect January twenty-twenty-one. I understand that. I might not be around. Why would I care? Or I might get re-elected, and I still don't care. I'll tell you why. We're here to serve the community. We're not here to collect money or, or raise, again. I love this city, and I ran because I wanted to help the community. I do more than, I believe I do more than, than what's required from a council member here. All my hands are tied when other council members complain about what I do out in the city and stay out of their area. You're getting right back again to the whole city of Moreno Valley. Would you like me to get out there and say, "I'm not gonna help you, call your district"? Remember, my job's District Three, I'm only gonna work in District Three. I don't get paid enough money. That wouldn't sound too good. But getting to the salaries... Nah, I don't, we shouldn't get a raise. I don't care if it's been twelve years, fifteen years. If you don't like the pay, don't run for the office. Simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know if I could have, could say anything better than, uh, my colleagues up here on what they've already said. But... But when I was reading the staff report, I did, uh, come across the date when this would actually go into effect. And, uh, the increase in compensation, uh, would go into effect. So, I mean, from my perspective, uh, I, I'm the same, like, what's already been said. I, I didn't run for office for the salary, for the pay. Uh, I could've stayed 100% in the private sector and continued to grow my business, but there was a, a drastic need for honest leadership here, and I think most of my colleagues here would agree. And that's why I decided to run and sacrifice my time. And, you know, outside of this, I'm a full-time student as well. I, I was first elected at 22-years-old. What other 22-year-old, most, a lot of you have children, grandchildren, what other 22-year-old is gonna run for office getting paid $13,000 a year? For the money? Like, no way. And it's not doable, like, councilmember Thornton said, for a single mother trying to live here in California is already expensive as it is. Imagine for a 22-year-old full-time student living in the state of California, it's even tougher. So, so, uh, for me, I mean, a- anyone who comes, uh, after me in this seat, I, I wanna make sure that they have the opportunity, that they do have those resources to do the job properly. And, and so for, for just myself, I mean, I, I was looking into this, and, um, if it's possible, when the day comes, January 1st of 2021, if this increase, if I can put that, that increase into a discretionary account or something so that I do not get checks made out to my personal account, I wanna do that. Me personally, I'm not gonna take that increase. I would rather keep it within the city budget so I can use it for city events and things like that, to do things for the community. So that's just me personally. But for any council member that comes after me, they'll be able to do this job even better. And you can ask staff, I mean, you should probably see their faces when I'm, I'm emailing late at night, I'm constantly calling them. I don't know how they still put up with me, but we do a lot of work up here. And so, um, I, I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I, councilmember Cabrera, you said it perfectly, um, um, that, you know, you didn't come up here for, uh, run for office for the money. I'm kind of a little bit bothered by, uh, councilwoman Marquez when you said, "If you don't like the pay, don't run for office." You know, I'm, I'm really, um, thinking also of the future. And once again, as to reiterate, many people of color, many women do not, are already underpaid in the private sector. Um, and they do not run for office because, um, they can't afford to run for office. And if you look, you look at the research, you see that it's a bunch of retired, older, um, white men. The majority of, of all of the elected positions at the national and state level are people who are retired. And they can afford, you know, to, they don't use the money from when they're, when they're, um, in office. And in result, a lot of the decisions that we are being impacted by are by people who are far removed from us. Don't you want people, don't you want someone that lives next door to you to be on the city council, to be at the state assembly, to be, um, a, a, a US congressman? You know, instead of having the same, the same thing all the time? And the only way that can happen is if they have, um, the difference in resources that are, financial resources that are lost from being in office. Um, and so I actually was pleasantly surprised at, I didn't think I was gonna get paid that much, although I was kinda naive by that, but I didn't even know I was gonna even get paid the, the amount that I was getting paid when I was running and campaigning. Um, and so I just, I'm thinking of the future, I'm thinking of the people that live here in Moreno Valley, how much they're, on average, they're bringing home, was it 40,000 to 50,000 a year is the a- average family salary? Um, and I want people that live on my street and my block to be able to run for office. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, we'll go ahead and, uh, close deliberation, entertain a motion by council to approve recommendation.
So moved?
A move by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by councilmember Dr. Thornton. Okay, motion carries four yes, one nay. And then we'll go straight to item F. So this one is F1, and we're gonna do a, a series of public hearings, um, here. Public hearing establishing appropriations GAN limit for fiscal year 2019, 2020. Uh, report from Financial and Management Services, Marshall Ironman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members. Uh, the item this evening is a recommendation for the city council and the Community Services District Board of Directors to conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution for the GAN appropriation limit for fiscal year 1920. Uh, as a result of Proposition 4 in 1979, uh, the cities are required to adopt this appropriations limit that, um, really kind of puts limits on the amount of tax proceeds that can be spent by a jurisdiction. Um, with regards to the analysis on this, our GAN appropriation limit for the city, we're only at 63% of that limit, and for the Community Services District, we're about 47% of that limit. So we're well below our limits, which is a good place to be. So with that, it just concludes my report, and we're looking for your direction.
Thank you so much. Council questions of staff on this, uh, routine item? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna open the hearing. Public testimony, Madam Clerk.
None.
Okay, close the hearing. I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation number two, approve, a motion by, um, councilmember Marquez.
Second.
Second by couns-, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Baca. Please vote. Okay, and it's approved, um, and motion carries five yes. And we're gonna go straight to F2, public hearing for delinquent solid waste managements, report to Public Works Office. And again, this is a routine item as well.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, as indicated, this is a public hearing and report for the approval of the delinquent solid waste accounts. So this is an annual process, as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year and the start of the new tax year. This is a process that we take. Uh, the delinquent accounts are 60 days overdue. Uh, these are for the solid waste charges, these are the trash charges. Uh, the report, as, that's attached to the staff report, is a May 21st, uh, account of the delinquent holders, or account holders, and they have until July 5th to pay those. So the report is attached to the staff report. Uh, if approved, the delinquent accounts will be submitted to the county for the tax roll, uh, July 5th. So staff recommends that we conduct the public hearing, take comments, close the public hearing, and absent compelling comments, otherwise approve the solid waste delinquent reports, and then direct the city clerk to file the report with the county. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf. Uh, any council questions of this item? Okay, Councilor Marquez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Wolf, um, what happens i- if they don't pay their bill? Does, does Waste Management continues picking up the trash and just adding to the delinquent bill? Or how, how does that work?
So the answer to that is, in this process, well, they will continue to do, have service. And so that'll be put on the tax roll and may paid as part of their taxes. And then if they don't, then they're gonna default, that goes through the whole county process. So they will continue to receive service, uh, through that process. We will, they'll be contacted, they'll be asked, uh, repeatedly through either staff or through Waste Management of, of kind of what's going on, do they wanna self-haul? You know, what, you know, potentially one of the issues, but they will continue to receive service.
So i- if so, if you have a renter out there and he puts out the trash, he doesn't know that's getting paid or not, correct? So that, that, that notice goes to property owner, and that could be Utah, China, wherever, correct? Is that correct?
The account holder is the one that receives the information. Uh, there are renters that receive information as well, but the, whoever's on the account receives that information.
Okay. Okay, but, but, again, the, the trash is picked up regardless, delinquent or not, it's still picked up. Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, uh, and go ahead and, um, open the hearing on this one. Public testimony, Madam Clerk.
None.
Okay, close the hearing, council deliberation. Okay, I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations in numbers two and three.
I'll pick a motion.
Okay, motion by councilmember Dr. Thornton. Second by councilmember Marquez. Okay. Go ahead and please vote. Now for, uh, recommendations, numbers two and three for F2.
Pro Tem.
Okay, motion carries five yes. Uh, before we get to F3, I'm gonna, um, do F4, public hearing for delinquent nuisance abatement, just to get it out of the way, report a fire department. And again, this is a routine item, again, uh, so, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and members of the city council. The item before you tonight is a request to conduct a public hearing for delinquent nuisance abatement accounts. In 2018, the Fire Prevention Bureau performed nuisance abatements to remove hazards, hazardous and other nuisance condition from vacant parcels in the city. After having been served the, with a notice to abate and given a reasonable time for compliance, some property owners failed to voluntarily abate the conditions requiring our fire prevention contractor to perform the nuisance abatement. This report recommends that city council convene a public hearing to consider staff's recommendation to adopt the proposed resolution of the city of Moreno Valley confirming assessments on real properties and approving, placing the submitted property assessment lists on delinquent nuisance abatement accounts in the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Riverside County Property Tax Roll for collection. That concludes my report.
Thank you, any council questions of staff? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna open the hearing. Public testimony, Madam Clerk.
None.
Okay, close the hearing, any council deliberation? May I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations in numbers two through four? Moved by Councilor Marquez. Second by councilmember Dr. Thornton. So Marquez and, uh, Dr. Thornton, go ahead and please vote.
Okay.
All right, and the motion carries five yes. Uh, we'll go, uh, back to item F.
We're on F4.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, we just need to correct that screen because that shows a vote on, on a different item.
Right, that was F4. Second, second matter, uh, the council did vote on the GAN limit.
Yes.
But you didn't take action as the board, so if I would like, uh, if, if I would, uh, like to request that, as the board, uh, for the district, uh, you make a motion to approve the, the limit, uh, that was on F1, I believe.
Okay, entertain a motion, uh, to approve F1 as a board. I would make a motion. Okay, second by councilmember Cabrera.
One second, I'm s- I need you all to vote on F4 first.
It says F5 on, uh... No, we're on F4.
F4.
So this one up here says F5, but it should really say F, F4, Pat.
Okay, hold on. Right there, the most, the mover, and then, it's not gonna let, it's not gonna let it...
Can you just do a voice vote?
Um, councilmember Thornton.
This is for F4.
Councilmember Marquez. Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes five ayes.
Okay.
And then you need the motion for the first one again, right?
For, uh, F1, which is the GAN limit, as a board. And it was a motion by myself, and then a second by councilmember Cabrera. Can you just do a voice vote?
Councilmember Thornton.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Baca.
Yes.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna move to item, and the motion passes five yes. Uh, eight, uh, all right, so we're gonna go to F3, back to F3, public hearing and adoption of the capital improvement plan. I know that, uh, staff has reached out to councilmembers, uh, multiple times, uh, one-on-one meetings, and we've also had, uh, finance subcommittee meetings and, um, all kinds of things on this one. So, um, we'll go with report from Public Works. Okay?
Evening again, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council, I'll be brief, um, since we've had all of these interactions, I'll be very brief. So this is the capital improvement plan. Uh, I, I put up on the slide just kind of what the plan is, really, it's a, it's a, the public improvement. So we're talking about, it's consistent with the general plan, includes all of our master plans, whether that be trails or parks. There's a balance here, that we need to make sure we balance our needs and our fiscal, uh, capacity. It is a two-year funding request, but it is a five-year snapshot. Uh, we also use this for our long-range infrastructure planning, which is basically talking about our unfunded projects. These are the categories up on the slide, these are the categories that are associated with the, the CIP. And I wanted to show several of the projects, these are the new funded projects, a lot of pavement projects in there, uh, MVU projects, which are the solar and the, the bridge conduit, and we have some facilities projects there on the bottom. We also have, uh, MPDS projects, a lot of parks projects, and we have the trail projects. Uh, I did wanna make a mention that the satellite library, there is, in the, the sheet itself, we have included some old information, council's been, uh, through study sessions, have identified a location or potential locations in the south, we'll make that change, uh, we'll make that update in that, on that sheet when the final CIP is put together. So total of 41 newly funded projects, of those 18 are new projects. Uh, you can see the totals up there, almost $52 million in two years, broken down into those two different fiscal years. Uh, just for comparisons, last year, we did about the same, our last two-year, uh, CIP was about the same, $52.6 million of completed projects. And we do have 49 continuing projects from prior CIPs. Brief highlights of our actual budget sources, anything over a million dollars, so we have a lot of grants. Those are in the two projects, Moreno Beach Drive Interchange and the Juan Batista De Anza Trail. We have tough money in those, uh, amounts, most of that is for, or all of that's actually for the Moreno Beach Interchange, gas tax for the pavement projects, MVU, uh, development back fees, all those are the majority of the funds. The big one there is, there's no general fund requests in this two-year CIP. So our recommendations is to conduct the public hearing, abstinent compelling testimony, adopt the resolutions. There are several resolutions acting on behalf as the board, as the council, as the housing authority. We also would like to, uh, get authorization, again, for the example of making that adjustment in the, um, satellite library, give the, um, authority to myself, the Director of Public City Engineer, make final minor adjustments to the CIP to make it final, and also to allow the Chief Financial Officer to make the budget, uh, operating adjustments as necessary. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wolf. Uh, we'll go ahead and do, uh, council questions of staff. And then, um, I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing. Madam Clerk.
No speakers.
Okay, uh, we'll go ahead and close that hearing, and then, um, we'll have, uh, any deliberation. Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. Michael, just wanna say thank you for, uh, pointing that out for the library, uh, really looking forward to that. I know you're gonna start officially looking for the location, um, starting in the summer, so I'm, uh, looking forward to that. The second one, just wanted to make a comment, um, 'cause I, I was asking several questions before. Uh, one of the items in the CIP is the, um, a bridge over Indian, connecting, uh, both sides. And so, um, Public Works gave me a few different options there. Uh, one of them, uh, would only allow emergency vehicles, like a fire department and police, to, to cross. Another option would, uh, open it up completely to commercial vehicles as well. Um, and, and so, uh, I was, uh, looking at those options, there's a big, um, fiscal difference as well, uh, depending on which one we go. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm really hoping that we lean toward, uh, only allowing emergency vehicles in, not just for the fiscal, uh, difference, because we would save a lot of money, and maybe you can share how much of a difference that would be. But also because, um, where that bridge would go, there's a lot of residential, there's a lot of houses right there, and, um, I'm pretty sure that my constituents would not be happy with big rigs starting to drive by there, uh, constantly. So, um, that's all the comments I have, thank you.
So do you have a, a suggestion?
Uh, yeah, so for the, for the, the item regarding the Indian Bridge, yeah, exactly. Um, just to, to make sure that we do go with the option of only allowing emergency vehicles, uh, over that bridge.
Over that bridge?
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, um, and is that already in here, uh, Michael, or?
That's one of the projects that's prior, prior funded and prior approved, so, uh, as I was talking to councilmember Cabrera earlier today, uh, we still need to produce our report, and so once that information comes available, we'll have some, uh, information for the council.
Okay, but do you need direction as far as, you don't need direction for the emergency?
No, sorry, not, not on that specifically, no.
Okay, so then we're good then. Okay, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations in numbers one through three. Any motion? Okay, moved by councilmember Dr. Thornton. Is second by councilmember Marquez. Please vote on this one. Is second by Councilmember Marquez. Please vote on this one. Okay, motion carries. Uh, I entertain a motion by the housing authority to approve staff's recommendation number one.
All moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. Okay, motion carries, five yes. I entertain a motion by the Community Services District to approve staff's recommendation number one.
All moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Councilmember Marquez. Please vote. And we're missing someone. There we go. Okay, motion carries, five yes. All right. So we'll go straight to, um, G one.
F five.
Oh, sorry, F five, going a little too fast. Okay, so with F five, I believe that's the one where, um, I need to recuse myself due to property. And I believe, uh, Councilmember Marquez, yeah, as well. So Mayor Pro Tem Baca, you'll lead this one.
I'll wait till you step up. Item F five, public hearing to confirm diagrams and assessments for landscape maintenance districts number two thousand fourteen dash two for fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, report of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. This is another, our, another exciting public hearing for our annual process. So this is the annual process. This is for Maintenance District two thousand fourteen oh two for fiscal year nineteen twenty. These are for landscape purposes. So the council initiated the levy process and approved the engineer's report back in April of this year, establishing tonight as the intent to levy and the public hearing. Uh, what we're doing is that we're setting the max on applied rates that are indicated in not only the staff report, but the engineer's report that's attached. Um, the engineer report also includes the discussion about the level of service, and that's associated with the, designated by the funding sources or funding amount that's available. So that's also in the report. So staff recommends that we do conduct a public hearing tonight, take testimony, close the public hearing, and absent any compelling arguments otherwise, uh, approve and adopt the resolutions, confirm the diagram and the assessments for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and authorize the CFO to make minor adjustments as outlined in the staff report. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff from the council? We'll open up the hearing. I don't have a hammer. Any public testimony, city clerk?
None.
Okay, we'll close the hearing. I'll entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendations, numbers two and three. Motion by Councilmember Thornton. Second by Councilmember Cabrera.
Motion passes, three ice. Two away.
Three.
Yes, two away.
And two recusals.
Okay.
He's back.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. We'll do, uh, G one, which is fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, third quarter budget review and approval of the fiscal year two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, third quarter budget amendments. Report from Financial and Management Services, uh, Office, and this has also been to, uh, the Finance Committee as well.
Yes, it has, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Uh, as part of our ongoing budget process, we bring back quarterly reports to the city council to keep them apprised of where revenues and expenditures are trending within the city. Uh, the report this evening is for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. It's the third quarter budget report. Uh, from the high level, uh, what we're looking at is, uh, we have about seventy-five percent of the year expired in that time period. Uh, our general fund revenues are expected to trend about fifty-seven percent through that time period, and we're at sixty-five percent. Uh, on the expenditure side in the general fund, uh, as it is three quarters of the year, we would expect expenditures to be about seventy-five percent, and they're at sixty-three percent. Uh, so both numbers are healthy and kind of in the range that we would like to see them at this point in time. Uh, so that looks good as we're kinda closing out the last quarter of the fiscal year. Uh, the second part of the report really looks at some amendments. So, uh, as we're getting to the end of the fiscal year, there are a couple of things that we're recommending this evening. Um, some of them are revenue adjustments that just true up projections as we look to the year end. Uh, that increases revenues about five hundred and forty thousand dollars to a hundred and eleven point seven million. Uh, on the expenditure side for the general fund, there are a couple enhancements that we're able to do at this point in time. Uh, with the public safety contract savings, we're able to reallocate some of those funds back into road improvements. So part of this third quarter budget adjustment gives you two funding amounts for additional street improvements. Uh, one being eight hundred thousand that would go through CDBG and back into those CDBG streets. Uh, and the other one would be seven hundred thousand through the general fund for more street improvements. So that's one point five million total on those street improvements. Uh, and the other things we have are, uh, for the general plan amendment, an additional two hundred thousand to help with some of the visioning and outreach programs that are within that process too. Now, outside of the general fund, most of the adjustments are minor, um, really focused on special districts. So once the council adopted the annual levies or charges for those districts, this trues up some of those amounts through the end of the fiscal year. So, uh, with that, that gives you a brief, um, overview. I know this item has been to finance subcommittee as well, but I'm available for any questions at this time.
Thank you, Marshall. Uh, any, uh, council questions of staff? Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, I, I just wanna say, uh, Marshall, thank you. Thank you very much, um, for getting down in there, getting your hands really dirty, coming up some, coming up with some extra money for our streets. To appreciate that, I think we all do, and the community does too. Thank you, Marshall. That's all.
Any public comments, Madam Clerk? Okay, council deliberation. Okay, entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations in number two. Moved by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Okay, please vote. All right, and the motion carries, five yes. And we'll go to the next motion, which is I entertain a motion by the CSD to approve staff's recommendation number one. Moved by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Dr. Thornton. Please vote. And the motion carries, five yes. All right, uh, we'll go to item G two, which is participation in a peer review study regarding potential creation of a police services joint powers authority. Uh, we'll have a brief report from our city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. I'll be giving the report tonight for you. Uh, as you know, Moreno Valley is one of several cities contracting with Riverside County Sheriff, looking at the feasibility of creating a police services joint powers authority and whether there might be cost savings in that effort. Excuse me, Moreno Valley has partnered with Riverside County Sheriff since incorporation and continues to receive high-quality public safety services. Uh, we're also encouraged by the newly elected Sheriff Bianco's pledge to control contract costs. With that, before you tonight is a recommendation to approve the participation in a peer review study uh, that will verify the feasibility of the Matrix study that was presented to council, uh, back in two thousand seventeen for the creation of that JPA or potential creation. This next step of a peer review, uh, was also discussed during that same presentation. And staff from cities of Lake Elsinore, San Jacinto, Wildemar, Hoopa Valley, and Temecula support moving forward with this peer review, as we do. An RFP process was used to solicit proposals for the peer review, and Citygate Associates was selected by a group, uh, of staff from the participating cities to award a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of fifteen thousand dollars per city. Uh, again, this review will look to validate findings, that initial study done by Matrix, and also consider any impacts of revising that study based on the six remaining cities that are in this, um, effort to look at a JPA. The peer review, excuse me, when initiated, will take about three months to complete. Uh, lastly, I'd like to note that this item was also presented at the Public Safety Subcommittee on May twenty-first, and that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you. Any council questions of staff? Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ellen, um, originally when we started this several years ago, how many cities have dropped out?
Originally, there were a total of nine cities, and three have since dropped out.
And out of those three, was, was it two or one city that formed their own police department?
Uh, actually Menifee is looking at creating their own police department.
And, and the other two, well, I know one of them was, it was too far out.
Coachella.
Coachella, okay. That was the one that, that, that was quite a distance from the closest, um... And, and the other city, the third one?
Paris.
Paris. But they, they have their own police department now, established?
No, no, they contract with Riverside County.
And they're gonna stay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, any public comments?
None.
Okay, council deliberation. Okay, I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations, numbers one through three. Okay, moved by Councilmember Marquez. Second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. Okay, motion carries, five yes. Okay. Okay, we'll go straight to, um, back to non-agenda items, public comments on non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, how many speakers do we have for non-agenda items?
Six.
Okay, we'll do two minutes each. Okay, go ahead and call the first three.
Scott Hevern, Keith Horton, and David Zites.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I don't wanna be the naysayer. I don't wanna be negative. I only have two minutes, though, so you guys kinda forced my hand. I have two minutes. I gotta say what I say. If it's negative, it's negative. Councilman Cabrera, I, I'm gonna speak fast. Councilman Cabrera, I love your idea about the shot, the shooting thing. I think we need to use that for fireworks, to shot locator, use that for the fireworks and cut down on that. Possibly it could pay for itself. Find the scuff laws and end this Fourth of July disaster that's happening in all, all of the districts. Every year, scaring pets and vets, and i- it could come to an end. Councilman Thornton, I agree with you. You should have a s- a salary in order to attract more people, and that's a great idea. But this isn't how you do it. How you do it is you run on that, put that in your campaign literature. And if you can get the people to agree with it, then that's great. That's the ethical way to do it. The other way would be the charter, and the charter could be very fair. You said the medium income's like forty to fifty thousand. You could tie the salaries of your salaries and these people's salaries to the medium income. You raise the medium income up, then you guys get a raise. That's how things work. You don't just vote yourself a raise. Nobody votes themselves a fifty-four percent raise. Nowhere. Nobody gets a fifty-four percent raise. You might get, uh, ten percent raise, two percent raise, fifty-four percent. That just doesn't happen. Uh, Councilman, uh, Baca, you don't see me at all the events. I have a job. I'm sorry I'm not there. I don't see you at all events. You're getting paid. So you don't hear me complaining when you don't show up to an event. Uh, I'm, I just can't wait to hear what Louise has to say, 'cause she is such a bright piece of sunshine. Good night and have a great night.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Keith Horton, David Zites, and Roy Blackard.
Okay, is Keith here? Go ahead, uh, Mr. Zites.
Good evening again. Couple quick topics. Um, I know we did take it off the agenda tonight uh, about having our tax revenue channeled to a lawyer to find us people to go into our warehouses. Again, I'm gonna push higher Moreno Valley. Why can't we? He's looking at forty million dollars is what is progress that he will make for filling our warehouses. Why can't we take that tax money and hire people to do that? Instead of just filling the pockets of another lawyer and other companies that aren't even living in our city? Why don't we get people that are living here to help fill our vacancies? There's gotta be enough qualified real estate people around that could help us out with that. Let's keep the money in the town. Second one, um... Mayor Pro Tem Baca, I am insulted by your comments about not being here. I work two jobs to feed my family. When we have such short notice from your agenda items that I have to take time off work, I can't just go in there tomorrow and say, hey, I need tomorrow off because I've gotta go argue about something I disagree with or agree with with the city council. I believe that was rude and insensitive, and I would like an apology for that. Because people don't show up just because they can't. Some of them, excuse me, just because they don't want to. Some of them can't, just like our other council people. People don't get paid a whole lot. They have to work two jobs. People work swing shifts. They have to make arrangements to be here. And that's another point that we're bringing up is notification farther out. If we get notifications farther out on these items, you'll get more people to show up. And I'm, in my feeling, I think you're scared of that. Because if you get more people to show up, you won't have your paid cronies lying up here to speak.
Next speaker is Roy Blackard.
Thanks, A.T., for calling us out, us evil white guys. But you did make the correct argument about the, uh, compensation and salary. It should. To attract people to run for office, you need to pay them. It's a reason why, and we should look at a charter city and things like that, like we started on about six years ago, because that needs to happen, so everybody has an equal opportunity to do that. Uh, I love Kevin Jeffries, the supervisor, and he has plenty of stash, and he donates his salary back. But that's great on top of that, but you want that as the voice of everybody because of the system we have? Sometimes you gotta look at that. Uh, it's come to my attention, and I've seen it, I've talked about the general plan amendment. We should be on that. It's been two years. There's nothing getting done. We've been doing hash, podge, patchwork stuff like, which has made the mess of what we've done. Retail that doesn't make any sense and works with that, and doesn't, and on and on. We don't get anything accomplished. The council should be setting the direction. The staff should be working on that, and you should be putting the plan in place to fast-track it, because it should've been done two years ago. It should've been done that, and we would've been business-friendly, and we would have attracted a lot more of the development, which if you look at the stats, we're behind of our surrounding cities. So it's time to get on the stick. Because if you're gonna do hash, passion, do, and start expanding this in industrial over here, which has been rumored coming in, you know what? You just might start some recalls going on again. Because you're not getting the job done efficiently at times, and we need to concentrate on that. Or because we don't wanna turn, turn things into turmoil and stuff like it did before. It's not being negative. It's trying to get it done. Just as a point of order, it did A sixteen get continued to a further meeting?
Uh, no, it just got pulled.
It just got pulled?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, Bob Polomares?
Good evening, council. Again, mayor. The compensation for the council members, I think it's a thing of sharing the blessings. Because you've, the council has blessed this city with the hard work that they put in. And you know, people take notice. They know. You go by the skate park, it's filled up every day. Matter of fact, it was in the paper again today, like three days in a row, they've been talking about it, the press enterprise. So it's good. They're taking notice. And I wanted to just comment on David Marcus here, you know, he said that he didn't run for the money, and that's probably true, you know? We don't know. But yet, he'll sell his vote when he was running for mayor. Matter of fact, he came in last. I guess he didn't raise enough. You know, he didn't even win his own district. And he was saying that, you know, I'll probably not be here the next run at council. I hope not. But, uh, and I kinda think he's still running, 'cause I see some of his campaign signs on Paris Boulevard on a utility pole, so... Anyway, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Bob, next speaker is Louise Polamaris.
Thanks, Scott, for the commercial, okay. Anyway, you know how they're saying about, I'm doing this because I want to work, I want to do something for the city. And I believe all of yous are doing that, because you can be making a lot more money. I know the mayor was, professor at RCC, I mean, that was over a hundred thousand, he let that job go, I mean, come on. And council member Dr. Thornton, I mean, she's a, she's a professor also at Cal Baptist. I mean, she could be doing a lot of other things, but she cares about the city. And Mrs. Baca, Protem Baca, I mean, she could do, I mean, you know, she's out there defending kids, advocating for kids with special needs and all that. And she goes to about three meetings a week, at least, the joint powers, this one, that, I mean, that's money she could be putting in her pocket. On her own time, on her own job, so I don't, you know, and also council member Cabrera said, I mean, you know, it takes a lot of time out of his job to be here. Now, if David has a problem, he's got two jobs, oh wow. I got a lot of things going on in my life, too, but I make it a point to be here, and sometimes even at the district and everywhere else. And as far as not seeing, she goes to so many darn events. How is he gonna know if she's not there or there, when he don't even go? I mean, come on. Hey, everybody's got jobs, everybody's got responsibilities, but they're crying. Well, don't come. I mean, come on, don't talk about, you know, do, do the right things for the right reasons for our city, because you love our city, you care about our city. All they do is cry and complain, and that's all it is, always. You know, they're criticizing the council, as usual, what else is new? You know, the liars' club here, the liars' club, that's all I gotta say. The propaganda, the obstructionist, that's all they care about, is obstructing. You know, and who would even want them on any of the seats?
Thank you, Louise.
Commissions or whatever, they're no good, they don't have a vision for our city.
Thank you, next speaker, is that it? Okay, okay, we'll go to reports. Okay, and that's section I, and we'll have section I one. We'll have Mayor Protem Baca, RCTC, and then Mayor Protem Baca, you can also do the WR cog right after.
Yes, thanks. Okay, for the Riverside County Transportation Commission, also known as RCTC. The State Route sixty Truck Lanes project to the Badlands will begin June tenth. The public is invited to attend open houses to learn what to expect during construction. The open houses will take place on June fifth in Beaumont and June twelfth here in Moreno Valley. Please visit the rctc.org website for further details. WR cog. Items covered at the WR cog executive committee meeting on June third, yesterday, include, the executive committee took action to approve phase two of a sub-regional innovation center called Experience. The purpose of the center is to provide a sustainability demonstration center, innovation hub, and business incubator. WR cog is updating and expanding the 2014 Subregional Climate Action Strategy to include all eighteen member cities and the county. The updated strategy will identify new opportunities to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and comply with state mandates and will be partially funded through the grant from Caltrans. And finally, the executive committee approved an adjustment to the TUMP fee calculation that applies to high cube warehouses that pull building permits after June third, 2019. So if you currently have a permit, you can pay it now or wait sixty days and pay a higher fee. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. We'll have two reports from Councilor Marquez, one is the Riverside Transit Agency, and the other one is the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority.
Thank you, Mayor. Riverside Transit Agency, on July first, RTA will implement their new, first new fare increase in over one decade. General fees will be a dollar seventy-five, while seniors, disability, veterans, customers will ride for seventy-five cents. The fare increase is required to maintain existing service levels. That's, that's a long time to not have an increase, but they do need it. The, if you have any questions, you could look up at the Riverside Transit, their new website for more information. Also, the student twenty-five cents rides start this summer, so if you want to get your kids out to the beach somewhere out there, give them a couple of dollars, they could be on the bus all day long. Yeah, wanna get rid of them, put them on the bus, right? Also, RTA comes out with schedules occasionally, and they also have maps for all the bus routes. There's some on the desk out here for the residents here, and if a resident wants one, call my office, and I'll be glad to go drop them off to you at your home. These are very, they're updated. Believe me, you don't, you'll be very happy with the hours and days that RTA is out there, so this is a good guide to have. Again, if anybody wants one, call my office, give them your address, and I'll drop it off to you. That's for RTA. Second one is for RCA. We had a short presentation yesterday on a species of the month. And they came out with the Northern Red Diamond Rattlesnake. A lot of people say, what's that? Well, it's a snake, if it bites you, be careful. It's in a wide area, it covers three hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-two acres in our area. That's a big area for these snakes to be. They come out in the early spring and early, late summers because of the temperature. So, if you're walking out there with your dog or your kids, beware where you step at, don't go near these brushes, stay on the roadway. Because if you see them on the roadway, they're not gonna attack you. All you have to do is turn around or back up, and, and, and don't, you don't want to get a stick and start hitting them, because then that's when they start being aggressive. Turn away, they're as afraid as you as you're to them. They'll turn around also and, and leave, but if you're out in the bushes, be careful, because this is the time of season that they come out. Moreno Valley paid their collection fees of the MSHCP, which was thirty-one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. And that included fifteen resident permits for April of 2019, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, and we'll have a report, a city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, just a few quick items. First, a speaker tonight stated that an item appeared with, quote, "only one day's notice in the newspaper," an item on tonight's agenda. Another speaker implied that the city does not provide sufficient notification of agenda items. I think it's very important to clarify the record on this point. Moreno Valley's city council agenda is routinely published five days prior to your meeting, which far exceeds the seventy-two hour notice required by state law. I appreciate the opportunity to provide that factual information about the extra steps that this city takes to advise residents of items that are coming before you for deliberation. Another speaker tonight asserted, asserts that the city doesn't get anything accomplished and is not successful in attracting development. Here, too, I'd like to add some very important facts to the public dialogue. Moreno Valley has seen more than eight point four million square feet of industrial space absorbed, purchased, leased, put in use over the last few years. That's equivalent to about eighty-four Home Depots, and that's just here in Moreno Valley. And this council's pro-development policies have paved the way to create more than seventeen thousand new jobs over the last five years. Those statistics in themselves are proof positive that much has been accomplished and is being accomplished every day right here in our community. I just wanted to set that record straight as well. And two other items, I'd like to introduce our new fire marshal, Paul Villalobos, who's with us tonight. Paul, would you please stand up? Paul is returning to Moreno Valley, where he previously served as our assistant fire marshal. He is a tremendous problem solver and has a great, great customer care outreach attitude. And we are really delighted to welcome him back to Team MoVal. And last item on my list, I'd like to thank the entire council for participating last week at the grand opening for Moreno Valley's brand-new and long-awaited skate park. That, that wonderful facility came about because of youth, youth petitions, and this council's direction to provide them with this facility. It was a wonderful event to inaugurate a fantastic community amenity for our youthful residents. And as we saw, hundreds of residents actively participated in the event. I think no sooner than you cut that ribbon, we saw hundreds of kids flying down those ramps, and that was kind of special. And here again, the council's wise investment will continue to pay dividends for this community for decades to come. So, thank you to the mayor and council for participating in that. And that concludes my report tonight.
Okay, thank you, city attorney?
Thank you, I'm the mayor, Mayor Protem. Council members, very briefly, consistent with your direction, as you know, we've been recovering some of the damages that have been caused to the city's various facilities. We have successfully prosecuted five cases, we'll be bringing you more at the next council meeting for your direction, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go ahead and go to closing comments from council members, we'll have Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. I've always said it, and I continue, will be saying it, I think we got the best staff, not only in the county, but in the state of California. You know, if I have a question, there's my answer out here. Our staff, and people criticize our staff, wow, they make all this money. Well, they do make good money, but look at who they are, very intelligent individuals. They guide our city through, I mean, through hard times. And I appreciate all of you, of your, your service to us, and especially myself, in my opinion, you, you guys are great. Thank you very much for, for that. Secondly, Saturday, I, I, I attended a cancer thing through Dr. McBean at the Crossword Church. And I heard some really good, well, not good, sad stories about cancer survivors. I wasn't able to speak, my colleagues did get to speak, but I wasn't able to speak there, one reason or another. But what I want to add to that is, my daughter, Melissa, overcame that cancer. And I just want to let the community know that I'm one hundred percent, one hundred percent behind cancer research. Without this research, who knows what might have happened to her, but all these, these stories that I heard really brought, close to my heart, and I feel for all those people, and I wish them well. And with that, I'm missing an angel game, but I'll watch it on TV tonight, so I'd rather be here than an angel game, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, first of all, I was in attendance as well at that event, as was Mayor Protem Baca. It was a very, very nice event, you know, a lot of testimonies there as well, so I'll let Mayor Protem speak a little bit more about that. I want to talk about transportation and doing, doing a better job of that, this is just an idea, I brought it up before. But the city of Monrovia has a program called Go Monrovia, where they put together their Dial-A-Ride program with Lyft. So they started a partnership where they're also subsidizing Lyft rides for their residents. Shared rides are two dollars and fifty cents, if you want to ride with four people, it's up to five dollars. And so the costs are enormous, there's a big cost savings there for subsidizing Lyft rides instead of just using the Dial-A-Ride buses completely. Also, you can open up to a larger service area, and you can still use Dial-A-Ride buses for folks who need ADA assistance, like wheelchairs and all of that, for anyone who's disabled, you can still call. And they also have a mechanism for people who don't have smartphones, you can call the city, and then they will book the ride for you. So that, for us, that goes through RTA, and our rep for RTA is actually Councilmember Marquez. So I hope that that's something that you might be able to bring up at one of your future meetings, or it's something you could look into, so that maybe we can save a lot of money. And we would also help a lot of our residents to get around to places they need to go.
Can I just comment real quick on that, if you don't mind? RTA does have a, called the Last Mile, they're still working on, on the system. And we are looking at contracting with these private agencies, Uber, Lyft, and all that, so it is in the makings, but I'm glad you did bring that up, thank you.
Good, thank you, thank you. Next, public safety. I would just ask my colleagues, if you haven't already, if we can maybe brainstorm and think about different ideas to continue to improve public safety. I've been doing some research, and the largest amount of crimes here in Moreno Valley, and a lot of places, but in Moreno Valley is property crimes, the vast majority. And then property crimes breaks down into a lot of subsections, two of which, the biggest ones that I saw, auto theft and larceny. So if, if we can find, or maybe brainstorm, or do some research and think about potential solutions to some of these problems, so that we can help out our police department and our residents as well. Homelessness, I've been looking into that a lot as well. Some of the things that allow it to, to grow here in Moreno Valley, looking at some places in the city, and some of the factors include recycling centers, liquor stores, illegal dispensaries, empty lots, motels, and there's some places in the city where all of those are, where there's multiple of those things. So it allows for homelessness and loitering and panhandling to just thrive in those areas. So if we can think about different ways to try to minimize them, maybe looking at moratoriums while we find more long-term solutions to these factors. If we can maybe just start thinking about that as well, I'll keep looking into it. I'll let the mayor maybe talk about that, but the North American Mayors Conference that's coming up, I know I've, I've already talked about it, but I was looking at the agenda, and the president of Mexico is supposed to be in attendance at that conference as well. And I'm hoping that, I, I know something really good will come out of that, and you'll bring back a lot of really good information, so we can implement some things here. Skate park grand opening, you, you already talked about it, I won't say anymore. Also, events during the summer, if we can, maybe the council members can get involved in existing programs, specifically for our teenagers. During the summer, they're gonna be out of school, they need things to do, if we can give them more opportunities to be productive and keep them off the streets so that they're not doing things they're not supposed to. I think that would help out a lot of people, and parents especially. Next Wednesday is the California Complete Count Committee for the Census 2020. Trying to involve myself as much as I can with that endeavor, because it's a really big deal. Historically, Latinos are extremely undercounted, and that needs to change. So, that's, that's one of the main reasons why I'm trying to get involved into this. And next Wednesday, there's a meeting at UCR, which I'll be attending, and maybe my colleagues can attend as well. Cops and Clergy is next Monday at six PM at the Police Department. And last but not least, just want to say congratulations to all the graduates from colleges, universities, high schools, from everywhere. Seeing all the posts on Instagram, happy faces, tearful parents, so I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera, and we have Councilmember Dr. Thornton.
Kind of like going third. I get to hear all the great things that they say.
Skipped it, sorry.
It's okay. I wasn't going to say anything, and then Councilmember Cabrera mentioned something. I, I, you know, we started with the Public Safety Subcommittee, so concerning the public issues, Lieutenant Kohler, maybe we could talk more about Neighborhood Watch? I think, you know, the utilization of the Neighborhood Watch program, how many, are they called chapters or groups are actually within the city? And maybe work on some type of campaign to increase the amount of Neighborhood Watches that exist? I remember growing up here, my block, when I first moved here, we had an active Neighborhood Watch program on the block, and I think that maybe the utilization of it has decreased over time.
Good evening, ma'am, yes, Lieutenant Kohler with the Police Department. The level of participation in our Neighborhood Watch programs fluctuates. Right now, we still do have a very active presence, pretty well distributed throughout the city, but while we facilitate those meetings, it's really dependent upon the engagement of the residents, so it does tend to- uh, while we facilitate those meetings, it's really dependent upon the engagement of the residents, so it does tend to ebb and flow where the problems are occurring.
Okay, thank you so much, sir, for that update, so maybe we can work on some type of, um, plan to maybe get, uh, the recruitment and marketing to get more established, and maybe that would then help with, not maybe, they would, they should have a direct impact on some of those issues that you brought up. Um, and, uh, I didn't have anything else besides that, thank you, sir.
Thank you, um, Mayor Pro Tembaka?
Thank you, Mayor. I did attend the National Cancer Survivors Event this past Saturday, and on behalf of the city, um, and with, um, Councilman Cabrera, we presented a certificate to Irene Kendall, who is a ninety-nine-year-old resident of Moreno Valley, and we celebrated her decades of involvement in the community, particularly in, uh, the Edmond area. And she too, and her family were, uh, business owners, and, um, her family was there, and everyone was really in awe of her, and you would have to, uh, read what she's been involved in, because it's been since World War Two, that's how long she's been, um, a, a volunteer in the community. Um, I also wanna say that, uh, the grand opening for the skate park in District One was phenomenal. I mean, I, I, uh, haven't seen an event, except for the Fourth of July event at the park, that has been so well-attended and a lot of enthusiasm. And I recall when, um, Adrian Castaneda, uh, presented a petition to the mayor, and the mayor created, uh, forum for them to come in and be involved, not only in wanting a skate park, but involved in the design. And, uh, I, I just was so pleased that the mayor did that, because it could, continued to involve the youth, and they saw their effort, uh, come to fruition with this great, uh, piece of land that we had there at the community park. So it's just an added attraction for the kids. I know that not everybody skates, and it's not for everybody, just like everything else, but the kids that were there, their families, everybody was very happy. That's all I have for today.
Thank you so much, uh, Mayor Pro Tembaka, and thank you for those kind words as well. You know, I do remember, uh, that day, that, that council meeting, that night, when, um, those students actually came, Adrian Castaneda, Luis, I forgot his last name, and I believe there was another kid named Cody, uh, they came and they presented, um, all of those petitions. And that was something that, you know, we felt as a council, you know, that we needed to do something about that. And so, uh, we actually started a workshop, it was like a workshop day, um, in the training center, and I believe, um, you attended. And I think, um, I think, I don't know if you attended as well, no, okay. Well, we had, uh, two members, uh, attend, and so I was there, and I actually kinda almost had like a classroom, I broke up the students in groups. I had them, um, you know, I numbered them off, and then they all, uh, were tasked with providing suggestions on how to create a, a really cool, uh, skate park. And they really came up with some really neat ideas, and then we consolidated all of those ideas, and then we had another meeting at the golf course. Uh, and that was also with the architect and Patty Solano, you were there as well, and the park staff, and. So there was a lot of work, uh, that was actually done in order to get it to where it's at right now, and I'm sure there's a lot of kids that are actually skating right now. And by the way, I wanna thank, uh, publicly to, uh, Patty, thank you so much for working with the lights, to make sure that, that there's lights and everything like that for the kids, um, especially i- during the evening, I appreciate that. And the kids are really happy about that, so. Um, and like, uh, the city manager mentioned, uh, there were hundreds, I wanna say hundreds of kids, uh, that were actually there. We didn't actually officially do a count, but I wanna say maybe it was like three hundred students, somewhere like that. And it was just amazing, you know, uh, to really see that amount of kids, uh, that were there, and then also adults that were there, and people actually came up to me and saying, you know, thank you, thank you, and it was just, it was a blessing to really see that, and everybody just kinda working together. And so my hope is that, like one of the speakers mentioned at the ceremony, that we work together as a village, uh, to really ensure that it stays clean, and that we all patrol, all of the residents patrol, and just kinda take a look at it, and some extra eyes there, cause, you know, there's kids there. I also want to, uh, thank, uh, my council colleagues as well, uh, for approving, uh, the mayor's challenge, Moval learns program. Uh, this is a program that actually started, um, about a year ago, w- we applied, uh, through Bloomberg's grant. And only thirty-five cities actually won, uh, the award, uh, the championship from Bloomberg's, uh, grant. And basically, we won a hundred thousand dollar grant, and it was amazing. Uh, and then from there, we started a little pilot project, and it was really great, and so this one is actually going to expand on that for two years. We're gonna be providing a hundred thousand dollars each year, and we're gonna be offering, um, you know, for the CTE students. And actually, and this is something that we don't have, we've never had in this city, not in the county, not in the region. And I think we're the only ones that have it other than Stockton. However, Stockton has a, a universal basic income that they're just barely starting. But we actually, uh, will now have a universal basic student income, where we're actually paying students to go to college and maintain good grades. And these are students that really need, um, that extra support. So this is something that's really innovative, and that Bloomberg, uh, saw, and I, like, I wanna say there were, were five hundred cities that competed, and only thirty-five were selected in the US. And so I'm really excited that we're gonna be moving forward with this project. It has the full blessing of the college, the staff, everybody's really excited about it. It's very, very innovative. And, um, that, which leads me to, um, uh, these comments that I'm about to make right now as well, that I really hope that, and I was hoping, you know, that, um, you know, the Press Enterprise would comment about, you know, positive things that are actually happening in our community. You know, the skate park, the Moval learns, the gun tech technology, the shot spotter, almost like the shot spotter, spotter program. There's a lot of great things that are happening in the city, and as the mayor of the city, I am extremely proud of, of how we're moving actually forward in all of these neat programs. And, uh, and it's just unfortunate to see, um, a lot of, uh, you know, the, of the misleading, and, uh, you know, all of that, that's kinda been going on as well. I'm very excited about the capital improvement project, um, plan, uh, the CIP, uh, the five-year, and also for our roads especially, and then the budget amendments that we made, the extra money that we found. So I wanna thank you, Marshall, and Tom, and, and everybody, uh, for all of that hard work as well. And then I wanna thank, uh, the staff as well, uh, you guys do an amazing job. Um, I know sometimes you get, uh, criticized, uh, by the residents, but, you know, you do go, you do go above and beyond, and you try to make things work, so I do appreciate that. And then lastly, I just wanna leave this, uh, with the community, um, as a lot of kids are graduating from the high schools to the colleges, to even middle school as well, and even the elementary promotions, just stay safe. Um, make sure, you know, just be cognizant of what's around your surroundings, this is a lot of times when there's a lot of accidents, you know, that happen, especially for seniors, so. And it's just really, um, heartbreaking. I actually had a really good friend that passed away, uh, when I was in high school in my senior year, and so I just wanna, you know, that, just reemphasize that, just be careful while you're out there celebrating at those parties, okay? So, uh, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-two PM.